Thank you all. The Lee County Board of County Commissioners meeting will actually convene November 2nd, 2021. It's after 6 o'clock. If we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States, one nation, united in the principle of liberty, justice, and moral law.
That was the best pledge I've heard. That was awesome.
Thank you all. I'm going to turn this over to our county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, you're here for a public hearing to consider the 2021 Board of Commissioners' redistricting alternatives. And with your permission, we'd like to start, I think, with a short presentation by Mr. Salyer, who will take us through the history of this process so far. I would then like to describe for you all of the communications efforts that have taken place to date, and then ask Mr. West to make some opening remarks as well. Thank you. Glenn?
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Mike, can we go to the next slide, please, with the timeline? Thank you. Here you see Commissioners where we've been. On September 7th, of course, we had our first conversation publicly at one of these meetings about redistricting. We reviewed the 2020 census data that had just been released at that time. We talked about the process and outlined the public meeting dates that are before you. On October 5th, you had a public hearing to review the first five map alternatives that were generated by staff for your consideration. And at that time, you took those maps under advisement, and you asked staff to take a look at generating some additional alternatives that would combine parts of the city of Fort Myers with Lehigh Acres. We did that. We came back with those new maps on October 19th. Now, at the same time, you had also indicated to the public that they could submit their own maps for review. We did get a submission submitted by the Lee County NAACP. We reviewed that also on the 19th, and Commissioner Hammond presented a map on that date as well. At that meeting, you gave us direction to update our redistricting report that contains the maps that you might consider, together with all of the analytical data, to include alternatives 1 through 5, plus the NAACP submission, which became Alternative 6C, and Commissioner Hammond's submission, which became Alternative 7. And that's where we find ourselves tonight. At this public hearing, you are scheduled to choose your preferred alternative from among those maps, and direct staff to create the accompanying legal description and publish that map so that the public will have time to review it before you consider it for adoption at your November 16th public hearing. To wind up the process, the Board is scheduled to certify the entire redistricting package for transmission to the Secretary of State on December 7th. Thereby doing so, will satisfy your obligation to complete the redistricting process within an odd-numbered calendar year. That's the outline as to your scheduled meetings, and if you don't have any questions, I'll turn it back over to Roger.
Any questions on the process? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Early on in this process, you instructed us to make sure that we were communicating with the public so everyone would have a very clear idea of how this process works, what we're doing, and have access to all of the information. So I want to take you through very quickly the redistricting communications program that we created. So we created a website with a special landing page for immediate and transparent information, and that was the lee.gov.com/redistricting. And on that page, it includes a redistricting report that Glenn referenced, maps both in PDF and interactive of all the map alternatives, the hearings and meeting dates, the timeline for the entire process, and then resources to links for other technical information and assistance that people could use. We published a newsletter, five redistricting items included in the Lee Government Weekly Newsletter, that went to 13,000 individuals who received that newsletter. It drove more than 1,660 clicks on the website, meeting videos, or on the ecomments page. On social media, five posts on redistricting throughout the process on Facebook and Twitter. The posts reached more than 27,500 people. Content focused on attending in person is not the only way to share redistricting ideas. Residents could then email to the redistricting email box that we set up for that purpose, and then provide ecomments to Commissioners by visiting the accompanying portion of the website. In addition to social media posts each meeting that included redistricting was posted on Facebook events to increase public awareness. And then the 2021redistricting@lee.gov email address received 250 individual emails. Under meeting coverage, special links directly to YouTube for the portions of the county commission meeting that included redistricting. Constituents did not have to click through the county commission video to find that content, but went directly there. There were media interviews and posts on the BOCC, the county commission. The multilingual effort press release translated into Spanish and Haitian, Creole, both were posted. Redistricting reports translated into Spanish and posted as well. Maps have been on display in the East Room since the beginning of this process for people to review, and staff has been in attendance prior to each hearing or meeting to respond to questions one-on-one on the public. In addition to that, a couple of board meetings ago, Commissioner Mann announced that he would be holding a meeting to take input from a group of interested citizens. Attending that meeting were myself, Richard West, our county attorney, and Glenn Salyer, who you just heard from. But in addition to that was Sarah McDonald from the League of Women Voters, Jerry Ware, Bobby DeLaSandro, Women for a Better Lee, Fred Morgan of the NAACP, and Jacqueline Miller of the NAACP, where Richard West gave a very detailed explanation of how this process works compared to charter review. There seemed to be some confusion about those two processes, and I believe that Mr. West will be going through that this evening, as well as will make sure there's no confusion about how that works. So that was the communication effort that's been underway and will continue until the process is finished.
Thank you. Can I ask if anyone could just silence their cellphones? I mean, honestly, all I hear tonight is they continue to go on, so it would be really helpful if we go through this process. Thank you. County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, good evening. Tonight, you'll be called upon to redistrict. Redistricting is a process called for by the Florida Constitution and Section 124.01 Florida statutes. Section 124.013 provides that redistricting shall take place in an odd-numbered year. That's why we're here. Traditionally, redistricting is done following the completion of the federal decennial census. As you recall, census data was provided to the counties, not just Lee, but nationwide, extremely late this year. As you recall also, that we provided to you the criteria upon which you are to base your redistricting decisions. Those criteria include equal population distribution, compact boundaries, alignment with census geography, use of predominant physical features, future growth equity, no packing or diluting of minority populations, similar boundaries to existing districts, and limited splitting of established neighborhoods. Redrawing lines to establish commission districts are all that's going to be discussed tonight. At the end of the public comment and board discussion, we will respectfully request a motion from you all indicating your preferred map so that we may then advertise that map in conformance with Florida law for final adoption on November 16th. This process this evening has nothing to do with the manner in which you run for public office, nor the electorate of Lee County elect you to that office. You are currently identified as a district commissioner. This is provided by Florida law, and you must reside in that district. However, as you all know, and as we, the electorate, should know, you are elected on a county-wide basis, and every eligible voter in Lee County is eligible to vote for all five county commissioners. That will not change this evening. That will not change on December 7th. That will still be the case following your redistricting effort. Unfortunately, either through confusion or conflation of issues, this discussion point has become confused with the issue of single-member districting. We are not here tonight regarding single-member districting. Single-member districting takes place pursuant to Section 125.011 Florida statutes and the Lee County Charter. The Lee County Charter currently provides for an at-large commission-district election Only through an amendment to the Lee County Charter may this methodology be changed. The Lee County Charter, by its own terms, is due for review in the year 2024. Eighteen months prior to November of 2024, you five will be called upon to appoint three members each to a charter review commission. That commission then will spend approximately 18 months conducting extensive public workshops and hearings to solicit proposed changes to the county charter. At the end of their timeframe, they will produce a report for your all's action and consideration. If any of the charter amendments receive 12 of the 15 members sitting, those amendments would go directly to the general election ballot for voter consideration November 2024. Any charter provision amendment that receives nine out of the 15 will be presented to you all for consideration and possible placement on the ballot. Any proposed amendment receiving less than nine will receive no further attention in this process. Conversion of county government from its current at-large system to a single-member district system can only take place through the process that I just described. There is no motion that you can make this evening to change that. Your motion this evening is with regard to drafting a redistricting map. And I'm available for any questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any questions for the county attorney?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Let me just clarify one thing that's been fuzzy in my mind. Looking at our November 2nd tonight, we are to choose a preferred alternative, yet the next two meetings, we have to choose them all again. I'm wondering what latitude we have. Let's take November 16th. If someone changes their mind, other information comes forward, or for whatever reason, we decide we'd like to modify or amend in some fashion, whatever we do tonight, what options are available to us on November 16th? Or is it simply to rubber stamp what we do tonight?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The timeline that's been established and shown is in order to comply with the requirements of Florida law. The reason we have to ask you to select a map this evening is that map has to be advertised to the public prior to your final adoption. That final adoption will take place, hopefully, on November 16th. If changes to the advertised map are made, then in all likelihood, we would request an extension to this process so that we could re-advertise that map. The difficulty that comes in is the provision of Florida law that requires redistricting to take place in an odd-numbered year. Any delays to this timeframe, as we've outlined here, might take us past the December 31st, 2021 timeframe, and jeopardize the map and the process as not being in compliance with Florida law.
Okay. You've tried to explain that to me before. Thank you very much. And the conversation, though, that we've had was from one perspective, and I'll call it mine. This is a critically important issue that only comes once a decade. What we do needs to be done as right as possible. I'm wondering if the situation I described were to come forth, and there was a motion made and passed to modify in some way whatever we adopted tonight, even though that puts us in jeopardy with the law saying when we have to bring this in for a landing, I'm wondering hypothetically, who's going to file a suit against us for being a week late? Considering the importance of the issue and the need to get as right as you can, I don't know what agency of government's going to come swooping down. I know the law. I know we try to comply with it, but if we're a week late, I don't see that as such a horrible crime, if three of us, and that's no small task, could agree on a modification two weeks later.
Mr. Chairman?
Can you answer in hypotheticals?
I was just going to qualify that, that I'm not comfortable advising you what the impacts of a knowing violation of the law might be. I would respectfully point out that that's why we started this process as early on as we did, in the hopes of avoiding any issues such as this at the close or the 11th hour. And my recommendation would still be to try and meet the statutory criteria of completing within an odd-numbered...
I certainly understand your recommendation. Thank you for sharing this little dialogue.
My pleasure.
Any other questions?
Just to clarify, the county attorney, Richard, your beginning comments said our goal tonight is to bring back one map to move forward to advertise for the public hearing on November 16th. One map tonight, advertise it for two weeks for the 16th, then the final adoption will be December 7th, correct?
Yes.
Based upon the timeline. Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, a couple of ground rules, if we could. I'm going to ask every speaker to come up and speak for three minutes. I've given great latitude. I have an awful lot of cards here this evening. I am going to cut you off at three minutes. I don't mean to be disrespectful to anybody, but we have started this process back in September, in all fairness to everyone that wants to be here and speak. If anyone would like to speak, please fill out a card. Feel free to bring it up top, and I'll start in order as they were given to me. And my first speaker is Michael Welsh. So whether you agree or disagree with the speaker, no clapping, no yelling, no talking, no anything of that nature, be respectful of the process, be respectful of everyone's own opinion, whatever they may be, whether in conflict or not with yours. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've never known anybody to disagree with me on anything, so we're all set tonight. Thank you. My name is Michael Welsh. I'm well-known in Lehigh Acres. I've held several positions out there, and I live on Gulfside Village Drive. I've gone through the maps that have been suggested, and my main concern is, in a community that we have far east, 20 miles, 25 miles from here, that you do all that you can to keep Lehigh Acres together as an intact, succinct community. When I moved to Lehigh Acres, 50,000 people live there now. There's 120,000 or so. It's our largest unincorporated area within Lee County, and I'm asking that because you are the general-purpose government for Lehigh Acres, that you keep us together as a succinct community. I think that Mr. West has explained carefully, for those who want to understand what the Florida Legislature and its statutes have put together on what redistricting should look like. I think that map number five is sensible for the people of Lehigh Acres, and hope that you respectfully consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kevin Watkins.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. My name's Kevin Watkins. I'm a resident of Lee County for 25 years. I served the county for 22 years as a law enforcement officer. With that said, I have great interest in reviewing the review of the census data that was provided for the maps. I currently oversee a profit and loss for 36 chain pharmacies that currently brings in a $248 million revenue for the county. It's taxable revenue. I have five kids, all growing up in Lee County. The county's growing at a very rapid rate, so I just ask that you keep in review of these maps that with this rapid growth and review of, excuse me, the census, that you keep map five where it stands. A map change would not only affect the change in representation, but it would also affect our ecological system, and that is said with the current representation that we have. I sit on the board with Coastal Conservation of America and our waters, and it greatly concerns me if there's major changes with the representation, that there'll be oversight on some of the ecological systems with the building, and also the rapid growth of the county. So I please ask everybody to vote for map five, and keep map five where it's at. Thank you.
Thank you. Ian Radkin. Ian Radkin?
My name is Ian Rankin. I'm from District 3, and I've reviewed the maps, and I think that map option number five shows the most parity, and I support it for that reason, amongst others, and I would hope that map five is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Nathan.
Don't start my time yet. I got you, Jim. Jim Nathan, representing Southwest Florida Voices for Racial Justice. Dunbar Must Come Home. A decade ago, most of Dunbar was placed in a district predominantly North Fort Myers. That commission decision by a 3-2 vote was taken over the strong objections of Fort Myers Mayor Henderson and Councilman Streets. Commissioners Mann and Bigelow asked to table the motion, and the Fort Myers Community Development Department offered an alternative that kept the entire city of Fort Myers intact. None of the Commissioners who voted for that final plan are on the commission today. We don't know their rationale, but minority representation was significantly diluted, the city was split, and maybe these are signs of gerrymandering. Apparently, some current Commissioners strongly advocate, and we've already heard three presentations for, or at least two or three presentations for map five. Map five does not reunite Dunbar with greater Fort Myers. There's no rational reason to perpetuate an inappropriate action from a decade later. Two wrongs don't make a right. Lingering emotions from the 2011 redistricting process remain raw, especially for many of our often underrepresented African-American residents. We want to right that wrong and not cement for another decade districts that dilute minority voices. My immediate reaction to Commissioner Hammond's no-split map seven was that this map looks and feels like the Lee County I have lived in for over 46 years. Map seven looks like Lee County. The municipalities of Lehigh, Fort Myers, Astero, and Benita are not split. Cape Coral is only partially split, and Dunbar comes home. Only three alternatives bring Dunbar home. I believe maps 1, 2, 4, and 5 should be discarded. Please pursue fair districts that look like Lee County. Give all our diverse communities a voice. Please bring Dunbar back home. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Watson? Karen Watson? And after that, Nathan Shore.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for adding this meeting to tonight for voices to be heard and their ideas. I'm Karen Putman Watson, a native of Lee County. I've worked with school district for 22 years. I work with teen moms in a nonprofit for 10 years, and currently a Lee Health social worker. The current district map was gerrymandered to dilute voices of traditional marginalized populations in Lee County citizens. Adopting map five would continue this shameful tradition. I am president of Progressive Women of Southwest Florida. We are a group of women in Southwest Florida who shares common progressive principles and values. Together, we believe in equality, dignity, respect, and rights of all people, regardless of ability of color, ethnicity, gender, identity, religion, age, or sexual orientation. I am speaking on behalf of 80 members. Progressive Women of Southwest Florida supports a fair redistricting process with clear criteria, the adoption of a new district map that keeps communities whole, largely following city boundaries, borders, and natural boundaries, the adoption of a map that strengthens the opportunity for effective voices of minority people and of color in our community, in contrast to the 2011 redistricting map that diluted them, and the adoption of map seven. We appreciate those officials who are hearing our voices and responding to the input of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Nathan Shore is next.
Morning, Mr. Chair and Lee County Commissioners. I'd first like to thank all of you for your dedication, your commitment to challenging work and the time you put in managing Lee County. The redistricting of our very vibrant and growing county is a prominent issue today. I know all of you have looked seriously at the many options presented and the updates to the five districts. I have also taken the time to view the many options proposed and find that the best option is map number five. This option offers the least changes, allowing all of you to continue to represent the areas you have been, while at the same time making adjustments for population growth and shifts within the county. Your commitment to the future growth, economic development, and strength of Lee County is very much appreciated. I urge you to vote option number five tonight.
Thank you. Hugh Starnes.
The biggest issue certainly appears to be what will happen to Dunbar. The origins of Dunbar that led to today's status evolved in an early period of habitation of what has become Fort Myers and Lee County. A man believed to be the first African resident, Nelson Tillis, lived on the banks of the Kalusahatchee River in 1867. He was a fisherman and a carpenter. Then white settlers started arriving at a rapid rate. They soon told Nelson that he could not live on the river and must move to a spot which later became known as Safety Hill. The name implied the obvious: stay in your designated area, particularly after dark. That ominous beginning led to future lynchings, to not-so-quiet oppression, and second-class citizenship. It triggered an embarrassing history of racial prejudice. The 2011 redistricting became a sad part of that process in history. You have a wide array of maps, as has been pointed out, but only three maps adequately address the harm done to Dunbar in 2011: 3, 6C, and 7. Each of these maps furnish an opportunity for a candidate who is of racial or ethnic minority a fair chance for electoral representation. My group, Southwest Florida Voices for Racial District Justice, support map seven. There's a distinct possibility that there will be a lawsuit on these issues in the future. If so, each of you will be likely called on to testify under oath before a judge, and if you've chosen a map other than one of these three, you will be asked, certainly, why did you do that? Whatever your answer... Whatever your answer, a likely conclusion would be to enhance your chances for reelection or because of hidden or overt racial prejudice. Either of those reasons, of course, would be illegal and morally wrong. So I ask, which side of history do you wish to dwell? Thank you.
Audrey Anderson.
Good evening, Honorable County Commissioners. I've been here before, as you know, and I brought a few more people with me. So I'd like for you to stand so that the Commissioners know and understand that we are all concerned about this issue, the issue of where Dunbar lands in this process. Thank you. I am here tonight because I hope we can find common ground. I will start with an easy concept. Can we agree that gerrymandering is an unfair, disagreeable, objectionable, and an invalid practice of drawing boundaries of electoral districts? It creates, obviously, odd shapes that dilute a community's vote. Can we agree on that? Gerrymandering weakens a community's voice and, in some cases, silences it altogether. Gerrymandering manipulates boundaries to favor one political party. The goal of gerrymandering is to maximize the impact of supporters' votes, to expand politicians' own legislative power. In short, gerrymandering is a corruption of the democratic process. Is there any Lee County Commissioner who will defend gerrymandering? Is it your pet political strategy? Or will you avoid it in the process of redistricting? These are fundamental questions that should be answered, because how else are we going to understand your choice if you vote for a gerrymandered map? What you think of gerrymandering is key to our priority request: do not gerramander Dunbar. At the beginning of the redistricting process, you provided criteria for drawing redistricting lines for Lee County. I will address a couple of those. One, limited splitting of established neighborhoods. And the other, avoid packing and diluting minority population. These are your criteria that you communicated to us. Dunbar is a well-established community. In fact, it is one of the oldest communities in Lee County, having been established around 1887 when Fort Myers was settled. You know the story, as Judge Starnes told us.
Your three minutes are up.
"My three minutes are up," he says.
Yes, ma'am.
I am asking you to please drop Maps One, Two, Four, Five, Six A, and Six B. Please consider only Three, Six C, and Seven. And I want to add my thanks to Commissioner Hammond, because he drew the map that really looks like Lee County. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Tompkins.
Commissioners, good evening. Thank you so much for adding this November 2nd meeting so that we, the public, can express how we feel and hear what you also have to say in discussion. Commissioner Hammond, thank you for presenting Map Seven. I love Map Seven. I love you for doing Map Seven, and I have not hid that from anyone on the staff. And the staff has done a tremendous job in putting together, in response when we said, "Bring Dunbar home," they put out Map Three. Thank you. Everybody has been responding, but we need you to respond one more time. We need you to respond to the shining light of democracy. And democracy today is putting Map Seven in place for Lee County, because not only does it give boundaries that make sense, it restores the integrity of Lee County. It says that we are all equal. We have the ability to do what we really want to do here in Lee County without looking at racial discrimination, without talking about gerrymandering. We are talking about this movement of ten years from now, right? For ten years. This is not about who's going to get elected. If you're worried about that, go get a civil service job. Because today, we are looking at, what is the best thing for Lee County? What is the best thing for we, the people? And I'm gonna tell you something, I lived in North Fort Myers. I love my brothers and sisters in North Fort Myers. But Dunbar, where my family resides, they ain't the same. Let's do what's right. Let's give everyone a voice. And that voice, it allows democracy to shine today. That's what your decision will do. Take the lead. Do not repeat the ills of 2011. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Joseph Camerata.
Good evening. I'm Joe Camerata. I've lived in Lee County for the past twenty years. I wanted to come here tonight and express my thoughts on the proposed district maps being considered by these Commissioners. I have been a developer in Lee County for the past twenty years and built many projects, including High Point Place, thirty-two-story high-rise building in Fort Myers. All the approvals for that high-rise were handled by the city of Fort Myers. The Lee B.O.C.C. county Commissioners had zero involvement and had no process for that approval. We now, most recently, in the past ten or twelve years, have focused our attention on single-family residential communities in Lee County. We have built multiple projects along Corkscrew Road, approximately four to five thousand home sites, also two thousand acres of conservation land, not at the taxpayers' expense. And we have, I have dealt with this group of Commissioners and past Commissioners, and each and every time, their involvement in these, were involved in these projects. We tried to address all the concerns by each Commissioner and staff, and again, districts played no role in this process. It was always what was the best for Lee County, from traffic to water to environment to police to fire to ambulance and any other concerns, but always what was best for Lee County. I now ask all of you, has anyone ever said to you, "I'm sorry, you're not in my district"? I have witnessed many projects come before this commission, never once heard anything about districts or district lines. Our most recent project, we have worked with the staff and county leaders to include the Commissioners, all of which provided input and what would ensure the best for Lee County, sometimes absolutely driving me crazy. A good example is the latest project we're building, a very expensive flood control system at the insistence of staff. It not only handles the project water we're building, but it's sized very, very large and very, very expensive to handle all the water for other parts of the county, and it was non-negotiable. Again, districts had nothing to do with it. The current district map is, the current district map is fair, since all voting is done at large. Map Five is the most fair map with equal population, one-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand plus. Anyone who wants to run for the county commission and is qualified has that right and can be elected. Changing district lines, some of the, changing district lines on some of, or most of all maps is problematic. These district lines play a big role with regard to schools, which is very important to homebuyers for these children's education. Again, Map Five is the least disruptive. Lee County has put term limits in place, which I strongly support, and I wish the entire United States would adopt. It allows diversity in all elected bodies, with new ideas, good and bad, but keeps things fresh with new people. I urge all of you to consider and support Map Five. It's good for Lee County, and it's the fairest map out there. Thank you for your consideration in this very important matter. I appreciate all the hard work you guys do for Lee County.
Thank you. Eileen Conroy.
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you. I am Eileen Conroy, representing the League of Women Voters of Lee County. Thank you for holding this evening hearing. It allows more concerned citizens to participate. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League of Women Voters believes that redistricting must be accomplished in an open, unbiased manner with citizen participation and access at all levels and steps of the process. The League promotes transparent and accountable redistricting processes to end hyper-partisan practices that don't benefit constituents. We oppose partisan and racial gerrymandering that strips away rights away from voters. At the September 7th, 21st Board of County Commissioners meeting, our President, Sarah McDonald, requested you work transparently as you go about the redistricting of Lee County. Let citizens know and understand how you will draw the districts and include representative input from citizens throughout the process. An important tool for transparency in the redistricting process is a Citizens Advisory Committee. It is disappointing that Lee County did not appoint such a committee, as other Florida counties have. This committee could have been appointed and started work well before the release of the census data with a goal for retention of established neighborhoods and communities. Why did only one of the five initial maps keep Fort Myers and the Dunbar community together? How are you, the Commissioners, reviewing and considering citizens' input? Why wasn't there a Commissioners' workshop to review and map options and comments, and how will these comments influence your final decision? Throughout the process, Board of County Commissioner members have stated they represent all in the county and that they are accessible to all. When our League, Lee County, contacted all Commissioners about redistricting, we were able only to reach and talk to two of you. Finally, the districts drawn by the Commission could set an important example standard for other jurisdictions within Lee County. We urge the Commission to make decisions that are fair and equitable for all of Lee County's citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia Hasek.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to speak here. My name is Sylvia Hasek. I'm here as a private citizen and a representative of the Hispanic Vote of Southwest Florida, and I'm joined by Carmen Salameh, our immediate past Chair of the Hispanic Vote. Honorable Lee County Commissioners, we are writing as a collaborative group representing the voice of the Hispanic community. We wish to add input into the redistricting process that will directly affect our voters. We are the Hispanic Vote of Southwest Florida, a nonpartisan political action committee registered in the state of Florida. Hispanic Vote Broward County, Hispanic Vote Palm Beach County, and Hispanic Vote of Southwest Florida encompasses four counties in South Florida. Our mission is to educate, inform, and engage the community with the goal of increasing Hispanic voters and political participation. After canvassing the community we represent, we agree that Alternative Map Number Seven is the best choice. This map respects the character of each community and uses natural boundaries that make sense. The 2020 census indicates that the Hispanic population of Lee County makes up more than twenty-three percent of the entire population. Hispanic K through 12 students in the Lee County School District are forty-seven percent of the student population. Hispanic students at Florida Gulf Coast University represent twenty-four percent of the student population. Hispanic students at Florida Southwestern University represent thirty-five percent of the student population. And Hispanic students at Hodges University represent forty-four percent of the student population. Hispanic business owners continue to invest throughout the county, and Hispanic homeownership is at an all-time high. We understand that the county does not have a reliable database with respect to the thirty-seven-thousand small businesses in the county and ethnicity of those business owners. The Hispanic Vote estimates there could be as many as eighty-five-hundred Hispanic-owned businesses in Lee County. The Hispanic Vote of Southwest Florida holds monthly meetings in Lee County. Our board members are each highly involved in community groups, giving us further insight into our community. We are in touch with the pulse of our community. We understand that using Alternative Map Number Seven may result in a shift for some in local elected office that use the county district map as their guide. We believe these changes to be minimal. This is the proposal that most accurately reflects our community. Thank you for your kind consideration of our recommendation.
Thank you. Jennifer Scatieri.
Good evening, and thank you. So, right up front, I just want to say that I support Map Seven or any of the alternatives that bring Dunbar back across the river, in case I run out of time. I've put up the criteria that you are to follow tonight in making your map decision, and counsel has done a good job explaining what should not be considered. And even though he has mentioned that at-large election process and possibly down the road, if that were to be eliminated, that is not part of your decision-making tonight. And so I want to focus on Number Six and Seven. And those that are supporting Map Seven, I've either heard that they have concerns that the at-large election process is going to go away, and we know that's not a valid reason, but they say, you know, it causes the least disruption and it's most similar to our existing map. And that would be a valid consideration if, and that's a big if, if the decision that was made in 2011 was made based on legal grounds. And our position is that it violated Number Seven, because it pulled the Dunbar community across the river, and it also split up neighborhoods. This is what the map in 2011 looked like before the redistricting. It was a very nice map, and in fact, it's very similar to the Map Seven that Commissioner Hammond has now proposed. Now, this is what was in existence before the 2011 redistricting. I'm gonna just jump ahead. This is what we have now. And I actually would suggest that you keep this map or up for this discussion as we continue through the public hearing, because people need to see that little jog of Dunbar that was pulled across into District Four in 2011. It made no sense. District Two had the least population growth and needed to grow, and for some reason, the Commissioners in 2011 decided they were going to pull Dunbar across the river. Now, District Two in 2011 was forty-eight percent minority. That just doesn't sit well, to pull the minority community out of District Two and up into District Four. So I ask you, when you are considering the eight criteria, that you not put weight on the existing map.
Ma'am, your time's up.
And on with that. Thank you. Can we keep this map up, though, so people can see?
We can get back to it easily enough.
Tara Jerner. Tara Jerner. Tara Jenner.
She might be outside, I don't know. You said Tara Jenner?
Yeah. Tara Jenner. I'm going to Mike Love. Mike Love.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mike Love, co-chair of the NWA CP Redistricting Committee. We're asking you to adopt Map Six C. This map maximizes the voting strength of blacks, Hispanics, Latin communities in the Lehigh Acres, Metropolitan Fort Myers area. This will allow people to pick their representative and not the other way around. Our map ensures we receive the representation we deserve and finally achieve equity and access to political power denied to our communities for so long. However, this is not just a map. It's a story. And it's a story of Lehigh Acres and Metropolitan Fort Myers with all its valuation, medium price $170,000, while the rest of Lee County is $364,000. It's a story about Lehigh Acres, Fort Myers, with the highest unemployment rate in the county. It's a story of one out of every three black and brown men will eventually have to deal with a stipulation from the judicial process. This is a story of incident of slum blight in Lehigh Acres and Fort Myers that is not occurring anywhere else in Lee County. This is a story of more overgrown lots where children have to walk day and night. It's a story of where most accidents occur, where more death on the street occurs. Map Six C was referred to as gerrymandering. No, it's not. It's all natural boundaries. Boundaries, Alva Boundary was created by the county. Buckingham Boundary was created by the county. Eighty-Two was created by the county. The railroad track that separated Fort Myers, that boundary was created by the county. We're trying to bring peace and civility and recognition in our county. We don't want to lift our eyes and have to look down. We don't want to do that. We want blacks, Hispanics, Latinos to enjoy the fruit of their labor in this county, and this county can give it by accepting Map Six C. Thank you.
Madeline Stewart.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Madeline Stewart. I'm a proud member of the Progressive Women of Southwest Florida. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Sanibel, and I'm also a member of the Southwest Florida Citizens for Racial Justice. So thanks again for adding this meeting, because it's very important for us to see new faces, and I think a lot of people are taking advantage of this, which is great, because we all have things to learn from each other. I couldn't agree more with my fellow League member that a diverse Citizens Advisory Committee would have been very helpful in the process, because there really is not an easy way for people to hear each other, except in this kind of setting, and then we're not really talking to our fellow citizens. We're all listening to each other talk to you. But let's, I know we can't agree on everything, but I think, may I ask you, have you all agreed on the criteria that you voted in in September? Is that something that you're all going to be using the same criteria to judge the maps, the new map, by? I think that's very, very important, because if we share an understanding of what the criteria are, then the process becomes something we can trust. If everyone is operating on their own criteria, then we can't trust how you make your decisions. I just, the criteria that interests me, or one of them, is that district boundaries follow prominent physical features. So can we all agree that the Kalusahatchee River is a prominent physical feature? I think we can. Unfortunately, four of the seven maps under consideration, One, Two, Four, and Five, once again pulled Dunbar, and we know what Dunbar is, an historically, traditionally African-American community across the Kalusahatchee River. So Maps One, Two, Four, and Five do not respect, do not meet the criteria of a prominent physical feature. Dunbar continues to be folded into District Four, which stretches, in those maps, which stretches all the way from North Fort Myers to the Charlotte County line, which is a very long way. When I wrote to staff to ask them, when I wrote to staff to ask them how they could consider Dunbar contiguous with North Fort Myers, I was told they're contiguous because there's a bridge. Now, to me, that doesn't really make any sense. The river is too wide, gentlemen. It does, the bridge does, the bridge does not make the difference. I support Map Seven, and I hope you will as well.
Thank you. Andrew Sudden. Andrew?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Andrew Sudden. I've been a resident of the city of Cape Coral since I was two, so for a while. I'm here to oppose Alternative Six C. There's a couple of things that are really a problem with that map, and I think we need to make sure that that is not considered whatsoever. First, this map fails to provide equal representation with a variance of over 1,500 people between the districts, 10 times more than the other alternatives that are present for you. Additionally, it weaves through the communities using a narrow half-mile gap to draw together a convoluted, politically-designed map to achieve political aims. Lastly, as a resident of Cape Coral, something that's very important to me is ensuring that the largest city in our county is fairly represented, and unfortunately, Map Six fails to do that. It dilutes the residents of Cape Coral's voice by drawing a map that runs from Charlotte Harbor to the Hendry County line. And so for those reasons, I'd ask you to oppose Map Six. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Norris. Carolyn Norris?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Carolyn Norris, and I'm here again on this acutely important matter of redistricting in Lee County. Almost weekly since September 7th, we've been appearing here before you, because the 2011 redistricting map is injurious to a well-established community of Lee County. I'm optimistic, though, that an accord can be reached on map selection that will right the wrong of 2011. So let not my words and those of the others be lost upon you. Here are my asks. One, reunite the Dunbar community. The proposed maps that appear to best fit in bringing Dunbar out of District Four, which is predominantly North Fort Myers, are Maps Seven, Six C, and Three. They all share a common component: restoring Dunbar, a well-established and historic neighborhood. The demographics of North Fort Myers are 92.48% white, 3.89% black or African-American, and 3.63% other. Clearly, the predominant North Fort Myers demographic outweigh and muffles the voices, concerns, and needs of the Dunbar community, whose physical boundaries are separate and apart, divided by a body of water. With certainty, I can say that the current District Four map and similarly newly-drawn maps that are presented are not contiguous, both culturally and ethnically. In my opinion, Map Seven is a frontrunner. Two, Lee County deserves a map that statutorily meets the requirements of redistricting and aligns with the Voting Rights Act throughout the country. Three, approve a map with boundary lines that are compact and of contiguous territory. Otherwise, should this Commission consider Maps One, Two, Four, and Five, which illustrates gerrymandering, a means of diluting voting power in communities of color, then it sends a signal that gerrymandering is acceptable, is an acceptable practice in Lee County. As our Commissioners, it's your obligation to eliminate a designation that denies the people of Dunbar their shared community values, their undiluted voting power, their community aspirations, and their concerns. Lee County cannot afford to continue to perpetuate this past wrong. Benefits of Map Seven, on its surface, it is a better presentation of diverse communities. It may ensure that communities of color have a fair shot at electing candidates who represent their worldview and will fight for their concerns. It may help to better balance and create communities of interest for people who share common social, cultural, racial, economic, geographic, and other concerns. Reuniting Dunbar will remove the stigma of the last redistricting process, which may have appeared to some as biased.
Ma'am, your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let us not, let not our words be lost upon you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Jerry Ware? Jerry Ware? Okay. Sorry. No problem, ma'am.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to stand before you. I was wondering what I was going to say after I've heard many come before me. But first of all, I want to thank Commissioner Mann, and I want to thank Commissioner Hammond. Why? Because you chose to attempt to answer our first call, and that was to bring about a diverse committee to assist you in making this decision. You tried your best. But out of that meeting, it was effective, because I have clarity. I understand well the difference between the charter and the redistricting. So don't let, don't be fooled. We understand that real well, okay? Now, Commissioner Hammond, I want to thank you for having the patience with me to sit in your office and help me to understand your map. Now, what am I saying? I'm saying to you, I'm a victim of what was done in 2011. But before that, I was a victim in 1982, when I ran for school board. When you had us, contiguous means a rubber band that stretches all the way from Dunbar to Burnsthor Road, and it popped, because I lost all of my votes once I crossed that river. I tried again to prove the point 30 years ago, 30 years later, and I lost again, because once again, a contiguous map did not exist. So what am I saying to you? I asked you at the last time I talked to you, be change agents. Don't worry about being disruptive. Change brings about disruption. Good change does. So you need to be, don't worry about being disruptive. Do the right thing. So what do I ask you to do as change agents? Bring Dunbar back from across that river. Allow us an opportunity to run for office and select those that we choose to have to run for us. And last but not least, I want to say to you, as I move away from this podium, Dunbar is not contiguous with Cape Coral nor North Fort Myers. And to those in Lehigh Acres, Ortiz, and Camel Acres is not contiguous with Lehigh Acres. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal, having a hard time reading the last name. Grayson? Crystal Grayson? Just can't read your writing. I apologize.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's Crystal Siskon.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. I read that you've only heard from a small percentage of the population, and therefore you must be doing a good job. It moved me to come here and speak this evening. I am a concerned citizen. I was born in Cape Coral. I live here. I work here. I've raised my children here, and I'm a member of the LGBTQ Caucus, the Black Caucus, and the Hispanic Caucus, and I'm here today saying to you that from where I'm sitting, this board does not represent every population in this community, specifically minorities or marginalized communities, despite claims that the board represents all. I would like to ask that we create commissioned districts, which ensure marginalized voices are both heard and understood. I would like to request a fair, transparent redistricting process with additional public hearings to fully understand and discuss this matter. I would like to see term limits in place to help hold our elected officials accountable. We must have a Citizens Advisory Committee. We must fight against gerrymandering. It weakens and divides a voice, and that is what is happening here. That is what is happening here today. Dunbar must stay intact. Dunbar must come home. Please reunite the Dunbar community, a well-established historic community. In fact, the second oldest, I believe, in the entire state. They even have a tour about it. Let us strive together toward progress that is fair and equitable for all of our communities, that represents our communities. I'm sitting here looking at one community with a picture of a Confederate general behind you, and you cannot represent all of the communities when you are still having photos of the past, talking about moving toward progress. Thank you, Commissioners. Have a blessed day.
I asked out of respect not to do that. Check Sadler.
Thank you, County Commissioners, and thank you, Mayor Rowan. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I wanted to speak to these eight items that Attorney Jen Secary put up, and we've been talking a lot about Number Six, the boundaries. It's so obvious that the boundaries that we have now are not representative of anything contiguous. I want to speak to Number Seven, void packing and diluting minority population. I think that that's the issue that we should be addressing now, the minority population, because there's a, 1965 Voting Rights Act states that when there is a minority-majority, remember that, minority-majority, that when there's a minority-majority district, the lines must be drawn to reflect it as long as it meets the other restricting boundaries and splitting neighborhoods and all that other stuff. The minority-majority is what the Map Six C represents, that we should be looking at the minorities that are growing in Lee County. The number of Hispanics and black people is The number of Hispanics and black people is growing. We, the privileged white men in this room, are the, are going to be the minority. And you look among us, what is this? Does this represent our community? I don't think so. I think you need to be looking at the minority-majority and looking at Six C, because that is what the Voting Rights Act of 1964 behooves us to do. And we should be looking at it closely, and it's not easy, because you have to take the precincts that these people live in and match it up with that district map. It's not an easy thing to do, but it's growing. It's gone beyond anything that we can imagine as far as the growth of the minorities in our, in our county. Please remember minority-majority. Thank you.
Iris Ramirez?
Hi, every, every, can you hear me? Everything everyone's been saying has been very interesting today. I came here to support the map option number five, and I've learned some things that I want to investigate further. I'm saying that people are saying that, I am a Puerto Rican, first generation, mixed racial heritage, I'm just so sick of the whole race card and all that, that's something, another story. But what I'm looking at is, and what I found insulting all my life, is that people think we all vote the same way, if we're quote minority, and we do not, we're individuals. And if we're, so if people think that we do all vote the same way, and some communities do vote for a certain party over another, for instance, then it would be gerrymandering and packing to make those districts consider, oh, we got to keep this contingent of the population in a certain area. So I don't know what packing means, but to me, it means packing a suitcase full of a certain item. So if that's the case, then the arguments for District Seven make me want District, or Map Number Five even more, because it sounds like packing, it sounds like gerrymandering. We want to get all the people who vote a certain way into the same district. And I don't understand how these districts affect other voting. I know they do not, they don't affect your seats at all, because everybody votes for, you know, at large. So anyway, so that was all I wanted to say, and I'm hoping to learn more about that now, because I've heard about some Hispanic groups that I didn't know about, so I want to look into that. But anyway, I was here to support five. I lost my notes on why, but lots of people are speaking about that, and sending you emails. So thank you very much for the job you do, and everybody in the room for coming out.
Thank you. Going to call Tara Jenner up one more time? Is she here?
I'm sorry, I have a hearing impairment, so I did not hear you.
Okay, no problem.
My name is Tara Jenner, and don't let the skin color fool you. I lived in Spain for many years, and I speak Spanish fluently. I've never voted for or against anyone because of their gender, or their race, or anything else for that matter, unless, of course, they violated the Constitution. And so I focus on that. I look at you guys, you're all white, you're all male, guess what? I don't care, as long as you treat everybody equally and fairly, and thus far, I've never had a problem with any of you. I have looked at all the criteria of the redistricting and listened to many of the presentations, not just today, but previously, and I encourage voting for Map Five. Retaining similar existing district boundaries lines avoids disruption of representations. I've built rapport with some of you more than others. It gives close to even distribution of the number of people. It doesn't violate the law of watering down any voting blocks that exist, and keeps the district to the most similar thumbprint size. I live at the north end of San Carlos Park. Map Three and Seven moved me to a completely different district, and since I live three streets south of Aliko, I've had that happen several times over the past decade when dealing with my state senate districts with changes there. Changes like that are really disruptive, and when it comes to building relationships with my elected representatives, it is counterproductive. It also raises more concern in the event the school district mirrors the district changes at the county, as both of these maps would change districts for many more people, and I'm not talking the representatives, I'm talking the people, than Map Five would. Map Seven is problematic because the unincorporated section of Fort Myers, south of Daniels, will be overridden and underrepresented because of the power that exists in the Estero and Bonita areas, as well as the great likelihood of future population growth when Aliko was extended. And that will increase the likelihood of needing to go through this whole process all over again in a few years because of number distribution within the districts. Map Seven has the largest change besides Map Six C. Map Six C is also concerning to me because large changes to the district, and also it appears as though there's a great deal of manipulation done in District Five, specifically that narrow strip over there by Buckingham. It, it looks very contrived. I also looked at the fact that everyone's worried about this contiguity between what's going on in Dunbar and current District Four, but nobody seems to be looking at the fact that there's also a river bifurcating District Five, and even Map Seven, you're looking at bifurcating District Four with that over on the east side, sorry, yeah, the east side of the map. So it's like, you can't talk about it happening in one place, being bifurcated, and not be consistent across the board when you're looking at that. Because of that, I also looked at the fact that Map Six C and Seven all have greater changes than Map Five, and it would likely result in either the school district adopting a different map, which might cost us a lot more money and a great deal more confusion in figuring out what district you're in, and it would probably, or alternatively, it could result in them having the same map as you guys, and I frankly don't want to be in Chris Patrica's district.
Time's up, ma'am.
So, thank you.
I'm out of public comment cards.
I have a question for the county attorney when you're done with public comment.
Is there anyone from the public that hasn't filled out a card that would still like to come up and talk? That has not spoken already? Come on up, ma'am. Anybody else who's, just raise your hand. Got you, ma'am.
My name is Stephanie House. I spoke at the last public meeting, and I thank you for having this meeting in the evening. That was one of my concerns at the last meeting. Of course, you told me then you had already had it scheduled, so thank you, and you see what having a meeting in the evening does. You have a greater output. And I just sat here listening. I wasn't going to speak. I try my darndest not to speak, but it's just something in me that has to, has to get it out there. I'm listening, and I'm sitting there, and I reside in Lehigh Acres. But I'm listening, and too much of this conversation is about minorities and Dunbar. And I am concerned about Dunbar, as well as I should be, and as well as you should I'm not liking what I'm hearing. Dunbar shouldn't be the primary focus of this redistricting, but it is. And what happened eleven years ago, that's a concern. And the majority of these citizens are concerned that it doesn't happen again. And if you're really listening, the issue is, majority of the folks I'm listening to, seven or five, and that's where the conflict or the concern is. It's like, don't take away what I have in five and push me into seven, or pull me out of seven. Thank you, Commissioner Hammond. Or don't move me out of five, don't take what I got over here. Keep them over, don't do that. Keep them over there, and don't put them over there. Don't put that, don't start that kind of conflict. I got mine, and you get yours, it's us against them, we don't want them over here, don't put them over there. But that's what I'm hearing, don't do that. Vote based on the right district for Dunbar, Dunbar residents, and the redistricting of that particular community. Those people are the ones that reside there, those are the ones that you're going to be concerned about primarily in the redistricting, and they're not going by water anymore. They've already come across that when that continent moved. You understand that? Take that for consideration.
Any other public comments?
May I ask a question?
No, we don't do questions, sorry. It's not rabbit's rules. Rabbit's rules just don't require that. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. Commissioner.
Richard, this question is the county attorney, then I have a question for Roger. Based upon the maps this process we went through, I know you went over the overlay, what we've done at the timeline, is all that map has been presented like legal and sufficient within the requirements of the state regulations, the federal regulations, as far as redistricting, and, let me see, required a state's requirement to redistrict.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We would be comfortable defending all the maps that remain on the dais for consideration with the exception of Map Six C. We have concerns over the conditions of that map as applied to your eight criteria, and therefore would not support Six C from a legal perspective.
Great, great, thank you. So my comments is, Map Five satisfies the equal population requirement, follows census blocks, follows significant boundaries, satisfies the requirement for contiguous boundaries, remembering contiguous boundaries may be maintained via a water body, is compact, affects the least amount of acres changes, preserves community interest, maintains traditional historical Dunbar community, does not dislocate other county commissioners nor school board members. And I'm glad Mrs. Ware brought up thirty years ago, because I remember you ran thirty years ago, the same thing happened, so thank you for bringing up the history that this occurred thirty years ago, that you had to run against somebody in Norfolk Myers, just like if it was District Two, the old way, in eleven, you had to run against somebody from San Carlos Park. So I'm not really sure how that changes, since our offices are countywide, that wouldn't affect the school board. But thank you for bringing that up, though. And therefore, at this time, I'd like to make adopt a, move, make a motion to adopt Map Five, and direct county staff to advertise Map Five as it be necessary, so we can move forward to a final adoption at our November sixteenth board meeting.
Have a motion on the floor? I'll second that.
I'll just make some comments on how I approached this, and it didn't change very much from the first meeting we had. One thing, I'm the smallest, I have the biggest voice, I apologize, I try to speak a little bit. I come from an Italian family in New Jersey, and my family taught us, and we didn't have, trust me, we did not have a lot of resources, but my family expected that we would take care of each other, and that we would respect everybody in the family and everybody in the community. I get very uncomfortable when we start dividing ourselves, you know, by any racial issue. My father taught me to respect everybody. And so when I look at these maps and try to put it together, the biggest thing to me is that where is the equity, big picture, in numbers? Because everybody counts. I don't look at you or you any differently than look at the members of my family. And I hope someday we can get to that point where we look at each other and respect each other the same, and that we care about each other the same. And if we do that, my first, when I was first appointed, somebody said, what can we do for you? And I said, just be nice to each other. And they said, what does that mean? I said, exactly what I just said. Anybody remember the movie Roadhouse by chance? Patrick Swayze, they hired this guy to go and clean up a bar, and they were fighting in there, and they come, so what do we do? And he turned around, he said, just be nice. And I think that's what's missing today in the world, and I think that's what's missing so many times in our community, just be nice to each other. If we do that, we can work through all these other issues. I realize that there are challenges to each of the maps, but if they meet the legal expertise, then I think they're all open, you know, for consideration, and don't have to worry about people coming after each other. I'm the newest guy on this board here, but what I've been told from a large part of the community on both sides of this aisle here, is that board, this board works really well together. If you have a family, and the family is working well together, then you've got something good going on. We're not perfect, but we work well together, and I think we come to work every day looking for what's best for all of Lee County. When I came into my office, they had just my district up on the wall, and I said to my assistant Charlotte, I want to see the whole county. Every day when I walk in, I want to look at all of Lee County. I want to be reminded every day of what Lehigh means to us, what Cape Coral means to us, whatever. That's how I learned, and I spent a lot of time going to each market. Those are my thoughts, you can accept them, reject them, don't throw anything at me. But I go back to when I was a kid, when my parents taught me, and that's the thing that I try to follow my heart with in my head. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm not going to, no politician is going to let a crowd like this leave without having something to say. First, thank you all so much. I've been on this county commission off and on for quite a number of years, and a lot of times, we get requests to have an evening meeting, so people can show up that normally couldn't because they're working out of their obligations. And I've been disappointed over the years when we have some of those meetings and nobody shows up. So thank you guys for caring, for asking for the additional meeting, and thank you, Commissioners, for being willing to have this meeting, because when this whole process is over, the one thing I don't want to hear is that we didn't get a chance to be heard adequately. And I think that's going to be hard to say. Now, whether we listen to you, that's another issue, but we've, we've, we've heard. Let me ask if, that you put the today's existing district map? Lee County Commission District, yes. This is what was adopted, that we've been heard reference to 2011, when Dunbar was pushed across the river, as has been stated in various ways many times tonight. And I want to make reference to what's been on there before, but I want to leave this map up there during my comments. This is the criteria I'm looking at, and you've all seen these, and we've made many references to them, as to what we're supposed to keep in mind to do this fairly, constitutionally and legally. And one of those that continues to jump out at me, and has been mentioned many times this evening, was no packing or diluting minority populations. Diluting. Now, there's a number of ways you can do that, and I'm, I'm curious, and I was the only commissioner here back in 2011, and I think it's been reported that I was a no vote, that it passed three to two. Commissioner Bigelow and I voted no on it. I'm surprised, frankly, because of, when that got adopted, this plan that we're looking at now, that we've been under since 2011, if there was ever an opportunity to dilute a particular vote, it's, it looks to me like we went out of our way to do just that. And don't get me in trouble with the chairman for, no clapping. And I'm a little surprised that NAACP or some other group did not take us to court back then. But I know this about the courts, they're very expensive, and to, to get up a war chest enough to challenge this and go through the many steps that you probably end up going through, it's, it's very expensive, so I'm guessing probably that the cost of a challenge back in 2011 was a major factor. But at any rate, that's what we've had here, and now that we're going through this process, it has brought that river crossing to the public's attention, and people are seeing it now that never saw it before, or never cared about it. So it's, it's a, quite an appropriate point of discussion for what we've been doing the last few weeks here. If, I'm not a lawyer, but I bet the lawyers following this process are going to be looking at that criteria that says, no packing or diluting minority populations. That's That seems to me exactly what happened 11 years ago, and that seems to me if we adopt this well-intended motion, I think we're gonna be repeating the mistake that we made back in 2011. I am grateful to Commissioner Hammond for the extra work. You don't just sit down with your Google one evening and come up with what he did. He came up with a fair alternative that corrects that sad mistake of 2011, and as far as I can see, would send us into the two-year process ahead of us, which has to do with the commission, the charter review commission, and that special committee that all of you all seem to want to appear on. And that would set us in the right mode and direction for what the really difficult issues that we're gonna be dealing with, because that's when you'll talk about at-large in single-member districts. In addition, everything else you want to talk about, the Lee County Commission Charter. So, I'm supportive... I'm sorry, frankly, it feels like there's three votes already talking over there, but I support Commissioner Hammond's number seven. Is that it? And thank you again for your bold act in bringing that forward, because it was not easy, it was difficult to accomplish, and he deserves a pat on the back for thinking right. No, dear, get me in trouble again. Don't do that.
My follow rules. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, sorry.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Commissioner. If we could just click on the interactive map, I see you got it pulled up there, and go ahead and hit the Map 7 tab. Yeah, just... I think you just clicked the map. Scroll... Yeah, just click that map. There you go. Hit okay. And then hit on the top right, 7. And then if you could zoom out just a little bit so we can see the whole thing. All right. Thank you very much. I just wanted everybody to get a chance to see Map 7 that we're talking about here. You know, I think we're always right when we follow the Constitution, when we follow the law, and when we follow criteria that we all agreed upon and laid out at the beginning of this redistricting process. In my office, when we drew Map 7, we started with the Constitution and the criteria that was based on state law in mind. We looked at an equal population distribution, and no district is more than 166 people apart on Map 7. So, it's... Population is balanced. Compact boundaries, I think you can look at this and say, those are probably some of the most compact of any of the alternatives we have. Alignment with census geography, boundaries that follow prominent physical features. I tried to follow all the major roadways, you know, 75, 82, Daniels, veterans. We use the river to divide, you know, Fort Myers from North Fort Myers in North Cape Coral. Limited splitting of established neighborhoods, we hit that. Avoided packing and diluting minority population. I feel like Map 7 really excels at every single one of these areas. At the risk of bragging on my staff, really, and me, I'm actually very proud we came up with this map. If you look at it, and this is why I wanted to put it up, so people could just look at it, no one gets an advantage with this map. It's like a baseball umpire. It calls the balls and strikes, and I love that. I will admit, I can criticize my own work. Map 7 misses the mark on two of the criteria that we put out there. The criteria that we put out at the beginning that says, "Consider population growth for future population equity," I'll point out, in my research, I did not find that criteria in the Constitution of the state of Florida, but it's a criteria that we have here. Knowing what we've approved for future development, District 2 on Map 7, which it's the heart of Map 7, and I gotta tell you, I know the District 2 commissioner is the heart of our board, too, here. He's a good friend, and we will be after this, I'm sure. Map 7 appears to be built out... District 2 on Map 7 does appear to be built out here. It doesn't have much potential for new growth, while every other district really does. So, 10 years from now, I don't know if Map 7's District 2 will have as much population as the rest of the districts. The other criteria that Map 7 did not hit was similar boundaries to existing districts. Now, this criteria is not in the Constitution. That criteria was not important to me because I viewed it as incumbent protection, which is something the Constitution says should not be considered as a criteria. So, that criteria ranked very low for me. To the folks who have heard opposition to Map 7, the one that I drew, please understand, my goal was always to follow the Constitution. It says we cannot favor political parties or incumbents. So, that didn't enter into my thought process when drawing the map. It just didn't... I've tried to stick by the book. Article 3, Section 21 of the Florida Constitution also says that districts, where feasible, shall use existing political and geographical boundaries. So, I had the best of intentions when I drew Map 7. I tried to put the county's interests ahead of my own and follow what that said. Sometimes those good intentions just aren't good enough, and I agree with what I heard from Commissioner Mann. It kind of sounds like we've got three folks that are behind the motion that's on the floor. You know, I don't know anything that anybody else doesn't know. I think a lawsuit is probably coming. I felt like we would have the best case if we drew a map that closely followed the Constitution. I personally don't understand splitting Fort Myers up the way into two districts, the way Map 5 would, when Fort Myers is small enough by population to fit into one district. That means, in my opinion, it's feasible that you could fit it all into one district. I'm disappointed that, you know, my map wasn't embraced. And so, that being said, I do find, you know, Map 5 also satisfies all the criteria that I listed earlier. The two criteria it does not satisfy, it does not satisfy the splitting of established neighborhood. It certainly does split Fort Myers. Its boundaries, in my opinion, don't follow prominent physical features the same way that the boundaries on Map 7 do. But it does have something my map doesn't. It appears it has supported the majority of the board. So, even though I have serious reservations about Map 5, if that's the will of the board, then...
No.
Yeah. Well, we'll see. We'll see how it turns out. When you serve in office, look, you put your best ideas forward. Sometimes those ideas don't come out, and this has been a very tough fight. So, I think it's time we got it... We've got to come together after this, for sure.
Chairman, if I could add a question for the...
Go ahead.
I had a question for the county attorney, Richard Andrea. So, Commissioner Mann, thank you for bringing up the history of 2011. You're right, we weren't here then. I remember watching that process. I know Andrea was here during that process, so maybe you remember if you can remember something. When this was brought up in 2011, these initial changes that we're working from here today, and that's why I picked Map 5, it has the least changes, so there's a lot more to it than that, but the current map now we have down... Back then, did the board members then, current or past board members bring up, they were concerned about legal ramifications if that map was adopted in 2011? Do you remember if that was discussed then? I know there's some conversation, and it's good that we don't remember that, but public records is the best part of it. So, go ahead, Andrea, if you remember anything about that.
Commissioner, I would honestly say...
Okay. Yeah, so, like we were talking about earlier, and Commissioner Mann said, "There was a lot happened back 10 years ago." I wanted to know historically how we got here today, how this map got adopted, and actually from a public record request from somebody from the public that asked for something. I have an email here regarding to Commissioner Hall, who was at the time District 4, and Commissioner Hammond, you know, seated her in that, and it said that, "From Commissioner Hall, I want to keep you up to date with the community outreach. We just met with Brother James, Mayor Walchill, and Steve Sherman to discuss Alternate 9, which is the current map now. They're very supportive of this alternative. They have made many complimentary comments regarding the representation they will have in District 4. I'm hoping to resolve the concerns with that community. If you have any questions with Alternate 9, Phil, please let me know." Rick. So, when you see stuff like this, and thank goodness for record requests, because it really does help us with history, and it really sometimes tells us what really happened 10 years ago. And so, I think at the time, what I'm seeing on paper here between correspondents, between commissioners and people from NAACP, they were actually happy with it, you know, the separation. I know on the map, at the time, I was just retired from the city for martyrs. I actually lived in Dunbar at one time, so for three years. So, I know the community really well. So, when I hear the separation in Dunbar... Roger, do we have the map that actually identifies Dunbar as the community? I mean, I know the boundaries of Dunbar, but do we have one? Because we keep hearing of splitting in Dunbar, and I totally hear you, and I'm concerned for that, and I wanted to see what everybody was referring to. So, with the city for martyrs, I asked a couple of meetings ago if the county manager could give the city for martyrs and see if they could identify geographic, maybe Dunbar or some Evans Avenue to Prospect, or from Marsh Avenue from South Street to Michigan, for example. And this is something, I guess that line there is what the city identifies Dunbar is?
No, sir. That actually is from a Google search.
Okay.
If you Google Dunbar, Fort Myers, that's what you get. The city of Fort Myers does not have a map with a legal description of Dunbar.
So, I think I'd point to you, I can actually produce grants that I wrote while I was at the police department, that were grant... Federal grants were presented to Dunbar for Stars Complex and many other entities. I see Teresa Walker Brown was here earlier. I wish she was there, Sergeant Streep was here. We could talk about that, because I was concerned, too, like Commissioner Hammond and everybody else here, everybody's saying splitting in Dunbar, because I knew Dunbar geographically was this neighborhood, to the point where, you know, people were saying it went into Lehigh, it went into Norfolk Martyrs, and I was like, physically, I didn't see that boundary being changed. And that's why I was asking the county attorney, is either one of these maps, Map 5, Map 3, Map 7, splitting Dunbar community? And county attorney, is any of those maps splitting Dunbar?
Not based on our best available information.
Okay, great. So, we... I've asked many questions, I've talked to a lot of people about it, and it's unfortunate that I, you know, that being told it doesn't really... Because I, for example, I have all this county agendas here for the last eight years since myself, Commissioner Hammond, has been working here, and we have a great relationship with the city for martyrs, and not one request from the city for martyrs was requested by the county in Dunbar. City for martyrs is the governing agency over Dunbar. So, if we had those requests, we would have fulfilled them. I know we've been working great with the city. When they wanted money for Harbor Side, they got it with the money for a new ballpark, Fiveplex, Alfa Rockville, we spent money doing that. Cortez Avenue, Rose, we're spending money. But we've not had any requests from your city representation of Dunbar from anything. And I'm telling you right now, we're a district, but we're countywide. Any one of us right here, I'm not speaking for my colleagues, will stand up and ask for something for your community, no matter what happens with the maps. Doesn't matter if you're a map boards, District 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, doesn't matter. We're all here for you. We will serve you. But we need to know what the community needs. And I'm looking right here, seven and a half years of agendas, and one request from Dunbar community to the Lee County government. And I know that we would have fulfilled this. I'm not gonna speak on behalf of my colleagues, but I can tell you that they would have. So, everybody knows, no matter what happens with the maps, we're here for you, no matter if you're a Map 5, or Map 3, or Map 7, whatever it may be. At the end of the day, you will be served, because we're elected at large, and we all care for everybody in this room.
Thanks, Commissioner.
And I would provide this email to... I got it from the county public records, but I can give it back to the minutes or the county attorney if anybody wants to see it.
Thanks, Commissioner. Couple things, honestly. I'm glad you brought up public records, because they've been flying all over. And I went back to a set of minutes that actually was provided to me today, and I hear what I've heard in the audience, but Alternative 9, county attorney, is what was passed in 2011?
Yes, sir. And that is your current...
Map 5. And I'm a little confused, because I hear what people are saying, but I hear, I have from the minutes, verbatim, "On behalf of Lee County and the NAACP, we want to thank you for your efforts for coming up with the appropriate redistricting maps. As we got further into the process, we realized it's much more than just drawing lines, but there certainly seems contiguous threads to consider a whole bunch of details. So, we'd like to thank the county coming up with what we'd say Alternative 9, and certainly meets the requirements we hope to be included." Those are verbatim from the minutes that I sourced, so I'm looking at that. Commissioner Hammond brought up an issue that I, certainly from a criteria point of view, and population gives me great concern of growth that we're going through and the growth that's gonna take place in Cape Coral and so many other districts. You know, I've listened to some people say term limits, and we do have term limits here. I also listen to people indicate that, you know, you can't run unless you're in a particular area. I came from Sanibel, which has about 3,000 votes, and I ran countywide for two years. It's a lot of work to go do it, but if I counted on Sanibel to get me elected, I wouldn't have received the almost 300,000 votes I received on the general election night. So, it's required to go out there, knock on doors, and do what you need to do to try to represent the community. And I certainly came from an area called Sanibel, and most people didn't know much about my upbringing. Where I came from were certainly the tough upbringing we went through, but certainly got to meet the criteria and people out there, and happy to do so. So, when people indicate you can't run for office, I just think you need to work hard. That's just my opinion, and someone that has worked for the last 15 years for free, I continue to make sure I do this. So, I also hear things of, "Well, you're doing it for political aspirations." Well, when free is free, I don't know what... There's a political aspiration behind it, and I could assure anyone up here on the dais, I don't have any aspirations to go any further whatsoever. So, I listen to Commissioner Hammond, I respect what he did. Population gives me a great deal of anxiety, and that was the reason for me seconding Map 5. With that in mind, any other comments before us? I have a motion and a second for Map Number 5. All opposed?
With emphasis, no.
Yeah, I'll object.
All in favor?
Right.
All right. 3-2, Map 5, cards. Thank you all. Appreciate your time.